It's 7:02 PM, a call of meeting, the April 21st, 2022, meeting of the Sagatuck City Planning Commission to order. Ask the zoning administrator, the clerk. Take your role, please.
Broker, here. Crawford.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Harford.
Here.
Manns.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Before we begin, just an announcement, because it'll probably be a minor annoyance to some of you, or maybe all of you. We expect to go into closed session prior to considering items beyond item five in this evening's agenda, so that we can receive comment on and what have you, the city's counsel, legal counsel, in matters for the planning mission. So I have to ask you to go downstairs and hang out, or go over to the sandbar, or whatever you want to do.
It'll be outside.
Say again?
Outside.
You gotta go outside.
Yeah.
So at least it's a beautiful night. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda from the March 17th and March 21st meetings of the Planning Commission.
Or do you approve of the agenda first?
Did I say, I'm sorry, we'll approve the agenda first, as I'm reminded.
A motion for the approval of the agenda?
Yeah, I would add to that motion that we, the planning commission will move into closed session for discussion with the legal counsel. Add that to the agenda.
Yes, yes.
Agenda change.
With that change, those in favor.
I.
I.
Opposed, carries. Now, the approval of the minutes from those two meetings, March 17th and March 21st. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second, your motion.
Yeah, I move the commission approve the minutes as presented for March 17th, 2022, and March 21st, 2022.
Seconded by Bobby, go ahead.
Thanks.
Those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item four on the agenda is public comment on agenda items only for tonight. Three minutes, a three-minute limit. If you choose to make a comment, please step to the podium, give us your name and the jurisdiction of your residence, and confine yourself to roughly three minutes, which will, clerk keeps very good track.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Do I need that or can I have one every other?
If you would, please talk into it for the recording purposes.
Certainly.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Chetan. I live at 6354 Riverside Road. I own a small group of restaurants. Two of them are in a building here in town. One is The Mermaid, in the building that houses it. The other is Baldi Smoke Meats, in the other end of the building that houses it. The reason I'm here today is not just to talk about Wix and their expansion, but also just to touch base a little bit on the last two years and what has brought to the restaurant industry, food and beverage industry, and many, many other industries. And I'm simply reminding folks of stuff that you already know. But we've closed, gosh, over 110,000 restaurants in the last two years. And I think Sagatuck has done a lot of wonderful things to help. I don't know how the politics works. I don't know if it was the council, or if it was the group, or, but what I do know is that in a great time of need, it was very brave to open up the streets, in my opinion, to some of this outdoor seating. And then I thought it was very wise, after it sort of served a lot of its purpose, to pull it back and make it what it is now. And I'm very grateful. It didn't help my business particularly, but as a restaurateur, I'm very grateful that that happened. What I would point out is that that was so noticed by me and all of my colleagues that I would hope and pray candidly that the group continues to look at things from the perspective of, my industry was in a complete freefall two years ago and a year ago, and so many of them lost, or 100,000-plus restaurants, multiplied by distribution and jobs, et cetera, et cetera. If there is a gray area, or an area that this group of folks has the ability to give permission to a food service facility, food and beverage facility, to seat to the maximum of what safety and fire code would permit, I think it would be a really challenging time to say no to that type of growth, that type of employment. And candidly, I think our city is blessed to have bed and breakfasts, and restaurants, and shops that are visited so vibrantly. And I think it's a big part of our town. So I would plead that you take that into consideration. And I thank everyone for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So my name's Dominic Daunter. My lovely wife, Donna, we're from 337 Palmer Drive. So appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes here. I'm here to support the cottage proposal. I think the additional seats will be valuable to the community. I think the opportunity with the venue, I'm an executive at Hayworth. We do a lot of business functions, you know, in Holland and Sagatuck. I think that type of venue is very, to be able to have business functions, rehearsal dinners, private events, and I think a venue like that will also help draw in revenue in the off-season. You know, it will be something that will draw in the right type of business in the off-season to promote, you know, all the other businesses in town. And I would echo some of the comments Eric made about the outdoor seating being a benefit. And I think the concerns around the seating and the noise, I think, can be managed. You know, I think there's proposals from Christine that seem to balance that out. And the benefits to the community, I think, outweighs the risk. And the worst thing you could do is say, hey, we're gonna try it for a year, and then, and react to it at that time. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? There is another opportunity later in the meeting. Catherine?
Catherine Simon, 428 Butler Maplewood Hotel. Well, here we are again. Parties have lawyered up, and we are no closer to a resolution. In fact, I'm more concerned than ever that the rights of the properties directly adjacent to Wix Bar and Grill are and will be ignored if this amendment is even considered. Simply put, the requested amendment does not represent the project that was presented at the public hearing. The capacity numbers remain fluid presently, 98 seats, and the installation of soundproofing materials to the fencing may require approval of Historic Commission and Planning Commission. How many amendments is an applicant entitled to? Mr. Druckey, I don't know, am I pronouncing your name wrong? References the noise ordinance as a solution for complaints. Someone should inform him, no enforcement exists. Perhaps the most offensive is Mr. Druckey, Ms. Murphy's discussion surrounding a dwelling versus a residence. The need to discuss the legal description of my property to justify the right to a good night's sleep is absurd, to say the least. The hotel is a commercial property, and the third floor has been constituted as a residence. Residential properties surround Wix Bar and Grill, period. In closing, I request the Planning Commission take no action and let Ms. Murphy pursue her options via the Aligan Circuit Court as directed to be the appropriate remedy at the last meeting.
Thank you. I might also add that I too have a food license. It's required at the hotel, even though we're not serving the public. But I have 15 rooms, so I know the trials of the food industry, because I too was closed during the past two years as mandated. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Jane Perplank, 447 Butler Street. I'd like to remind the commission that bed and breakfast were punished to no end. They were closed by the governor for nine months. We had no income whatsoever. Restaurants were allowed to do takeout. They were given all kinds of privileges in the city. I was the person who put together pop-up patios. We did everything we could do as a city to help out restaurants. And now I think bed and breakfast deserve at least an ear. I'm not complaining that I can't sleep, so that whole thing about you shouldn't live downtown. I'm complaining that my clients can't speak, sleep, and I lose money. I have to refund money because there's noise until 1 o'clock in the morning. So I think it's time to give everybody a break. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Christine, 449 Water Street, 121 Mary Street. Yes, here we are again. I am open to closing my outdoor space at 10 o'clock, if you are capable of giving me more seats. I'm willing to work. I do not want to be a nuisance to the neighborhood. That's never my intention. My intention is to run a business. With 25 seats, figure $75 per person they averagely spend, that's not very much money to sustain. And to be, and I think there is a constant need for rehearsal dinners. You talk to any business, any restaurant owner in town, how many calls they get a week for people that need a rehearsal dinner, that people need a space for a birthday party. There's not one space in town for those things to happen. It's hard for me to do that at Wix, because then that takes away from my normal business. So this is in addition to what I'm doing. I'm willing to close it at 10 o'clock. Everyone can come to Wix and have a great time. I'm willing to, you know, if you're allowed to give me more seats back there. I think it's a need. I'm open 365 days a year. This, that, every complaint that everyone has, how do we get to be like a South Haven, where we have year-round business? Me, me, that's how we do it. People that want to stay open for 365. I think, you know, like Dominic said, you know, there's businesses in Holland that are constantly looking for places that they haven't been to before. Christmas parties they haven't done. I am by no means trying to not make people sleep in my neighborhood. That's not what I want at all. I live in Douglas. I hear the dunes. I mean, it's just the way it goes. I, you constantly hear music. At 10 o'clock, I think it's a fair time. The sun is usually just setting. Things are settling down. I think if you give me your seats, 10 o'clock's a fair thing. The town needs this. Six calls, seven calls a week I get for parties. Where can I do this? Where can I do that? So by me saying no, they're going someplace else. And by someplace else, they're going to a different town. And that, they're taking all the people that were going to be in the wedding, or were coming in to do all those things. So I'm not meaning to disrupt and be a nuisance and all those things. I'm just trying to run a business and giving the community something that I think is useful, and actually copacetic with that side of the town. We have retro, we have the barge, we have everything. Before, that was a sleepy little town. No one went there. It took the barge, me, retro, to start pulling the community to make it bigger. Now all those retail stores do better, because they walk down to the barge, they walk down to retro. I mean, it's a, it, by doing something, by saying yes to something like this, it has an effect on the whole neighborhood, whether it's negative like they think, or positive. But we are a resort town. We make the money then. I'm 365 days. I'm hoping that we can keep bringing more people into town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Pat Druckey, and my address is 55 Camp Valley Avenue, Northwest Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I represent the applicant. I submitted to the Planning Commission a letter dated 14/20/22, and I'm not gonna have time to get into all this now. And if you have comment later on on agenda number five, I'll follow up on that. I would note that when you go into your closed session, I would imagine and believe that your counsel is going to talk about what I talked about in my letter, and that is the importance of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and the considerations. And it's a very difficult job that you all have. But I think that there are two important points that the commission should keep in mind, and that is, are the conditions reasonable? But just as important, are they necessary to ensure the objectives of the ordinance? And this is by no question, no dissuasion, a completely commercial area. Your long-term master plan identifies that entire area is a commercial area. The other users that came up here and spoke are in a commercial district, are commercial users. My client has agreed to reduce her hours and has also agreed to implement some other conditions to try to alleviate that noise. And so when you look at what is necessary, limiting a total occupant load by way of seats to 25 is financially devastating to her business. It would set her up for failure, as Mr. Fox at the March meeting talked about other businesses that come up, that have come before you, and you can sometimes see how they might be set up for failure. Limiting this applicant to 25 seats in an area that is able and legal to have more, considerably more than even that, what we're asking for, is financially destructive. She will not be able to operate. She will fail based on that, because of the few amount of customers that she can serve. So I think in my, in my letter, that's what I'm trying to get across the point, is what is not only reasonable, but what is necessary. I think the conditions of no amplified noise outside, the hours are, and the other conditions, with the exception of the 25 occupant load, are reasonable. The butler that came in and, or the development we see right over here, their only condition was the time that they could operate until. They didn't have conditions on outside noise or occupant load. Their occupant load is far in excess of this. So I would respectfully ask that you reconsider and allow her what she set forth in her March application, which has always been the same as what we're asking for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Anybody else, please?
Everyone, my name is Donna Daunter, and I live at 3337 Palmer Drive. And I'm a newbie. I moved here about four years ago from the Chicago area. A little town called Naperville, if anyone's ever heard of it. Back in the day, if anyone knows Naperville, we were a sleepy town. We had like two roads, grocery store, a bakery, and some cows and high school. That's where I went to high school. And over the years, I'm now 57, I have seen our town become this booming town. We have a great boutique hotel. We have tons of restaurants and bars. And I feel for what everyone's talking about here. I wanted to get up and speak, because I understand it was a bed and breakfast. But I also understand the need of businesses. And if we don't do something to continue progress, our town will dwindle up, and people will stop coming. They will. There were so many more options that people will go to, and that will hurt all of us. I mean, being here in just four years, I would hate to see my new home that we just built go down in revenue, because people stop coming to our town, because there's nothing to do. And I'm sorry, it's progress. I saw Naperville do that, and there were some headbutting. And now Naperville is one of the best towns in the whole entire country, best school district. Just Google it. And that took progress, that took change. It took people working together with one another, took business owners supporting one another, not fighting with one another. I mean, I think what Christine's asking for, by saying, okay, I'll meet you halfway. I'll stop the outdoor music, but why can't you have more bodies inside? There's no music, and there's no inside people that are gonna bother the outside people. If you're indoors, what's that? I don't even understand why this is even a problem. And the other point that someone brought up is true. There's no place to go for events. My husband works for Hayworth, and I was helping them plan their division Christmas party. We had to go to another place, because there was no place in our town, unless you want to go to the Felt Mansion, but that was almost too big. We need something in between, and what Wix is offering is something that's great, and people will come, whether it's a birthday party, it's someone's baby shower, it's someone's 50th birthday party. We need something like this in our town. And if we don't grow, we're gonna shrivel up. That's just part of how life is. We have to continue growing. So I hope you guys consider it. I hope you think about not just one business, but all businesses and also residents. What we do for our town helps all of us. It helps our home values. It helps us grow and prosper. So I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Brad Browder, 311162 Second Street. Here with my wife, and we're really newbies. We've been here about a year and a half, and we've been here the last two winters. Certainly challenged. These business owners have the challenges they've had in the last two winters. We've appreciated Wix Park, because now that we're locals, it's kind of a local place. And I feel like this expansion will be even more of a local place. If you come to Sagatuck in the summertime, when the tourism season is at its highest, it's really hard to get in places. That's great for Phil's. That's great for these restaurant owners. It's great for the bed and breakfast. I would just challenge you to look to the future. We're not asking for a six-story Hilton here. We're asking for a small venue that, you know, will give locals a place to go. And I appreciate everything Christine does. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have somebody online with their hand raised for a public comment.
Go ahead and recognize them, I can't see. Oh.
Mr. Val, you can speak.
This is Brady Bailiff, and I'm at 421 Water Street. And I want to also thank Christine for what she's done. I have been a patron of Wix for many, many years, long before I actually owned the property. It's adjacent, and so I appreciate her business, and I've enjoyed a lot of good memories there. A couple of things have been said that I want to just correct the record on. And it was in Rose McGee's letter that concerned me. It's that, first of all, my property is got mixed, is definitely mixed. There are storefronts that are on the, that are on the Water Street side. And then there's a historic home that's in the back. It's covered with ivy, and it used to be operated as a bed and breakfast. When I bought the property, about a little over, about four and a half years ago now, I stopped that operation, and it hasn't been operated commercially as a bed and breakfast since then. I just wanted to make sure the committee knew that, because it's been, it's not clear. It's been, you know, it's been the ivy end for many, many years, and that's how people know it. But it is not an end. It is my residence. I do rent it out through Vacasa in town, when I'm not using it in the summer. I've done that. And quite frankly, I'm not sure if I'm gonna continue. It's really not even on the market at this point in time. So I use that front porch, which is right across the parking lot, from the expansion. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that that's, I'm different than the rest, is that it's not, it's not a, it's my personal home. It's my residence. I had hoped to retire there. I still plan to, and I, and I still, I really hope that, you know, that Christine and I can continue to have a good relationship over this. I just want to make sure that consideration's given to, to me at least, to some degree. And I think I've got neighbors to the south of me that would also take exception to their property being completely commercial. It's not a completely commercial district. It just isn't. Even the preamble to all the things I've read, it has to have a residential flair. And you have to have residences to have a residential flair. So I just want to make sure the committee knew that 421 Water Street has commercial operations, but it also has a residence. It's not operated commercially in that sense. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
No one else has their hand raised online?
Anyone else here? As I said, there is or will be another public comment opportunity toward the end of the meeting.
Mr. Fox, this is Stephen Levy. May I speak for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you. My name's Stephen Levy, and I did live at 1021 Holland Street. I plan to move back to Sagatuck. I am not a resident at this time. However, I have spent plenty of evenings at Wix. And I have to say that, and I'm looking at it from a person, personalizing this a bit in Christine's favor. Having been in the restaurant business, and certainly having patronized many in Sagatuck, outside of Wix, Phil's, Pumpernickels, and Marrows, it's been my experience that the other restaurants and bars are really absentee ownership managed. And I know that every time I've been to Wix, and I would challenge anybody to disagree, Ms. Murphy has been there from open to close, and runs that establishment with an iron fist. That's, that's really a good thing. Most businesses in this town are not run that way. I've seen it firsthand. And I would encourage you to take that into consideration as you deliberate and make your decision, because I believe that she will honor any commitment that she is making, and that the Planning Commission can set the guidelines, whatever they are. I believe that she will follow them, and I've seen it firsthand. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I realize I'm no longer a resident. I miss the city, and I plan to come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, with that, I'll close the first of the two public comment sections. I want to, I want to just be clear, just the commission's ability to go into public, or go into closed session, is strictly governed. That's not something we arbitrarily arrive at, or specific subjects that can be taken under advisement in a, in a closed session. And one of them is legal opinions from the city's council in private. So that's the only reason we're doing this. So we'll, someone will come find you guys outside, or?
I will. No, but if you wait outside, I'll come back and get you as soon as proposed session is finished. It's not snowing.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain that motion now.
One moment, please.
Sorry.
I need to put everyone in the waiting room first.
Oh, okay.
And then we can proceed.
Understood.
I need to stop the recording, so give me one moment. I'll let you know when I'm ready.
Got it.
You can make the motion to go into closed session while you're in open session?
Okay.
Let's go ahead, at least get that part done. I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session at this point.
Second.
Close the motion.
Bobby.
Bobby, go ahead. Richard, Richard Harford. Those in favor signify, we don't have to roll.
I'm gonna roll call.
Okay.
Broker? Yes. Crawford?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Harford?
Yes.
Manns?
Yes.
Chair?
I'm pausing recording.
It feels like a general admission shower.
Yes. You're a brave man.
I got a reminder, so.
I'm admitting everyone back into the meeting.
For what?
What are you suggesting to her?
Okay, what did he say?
What are we suggesting to her?
What is what?
What are we, what number?
If I can.
Say, we'd better discuss that.
That's, that's for discussion.
We'll discuss in open session. Okay.
And we left off at number five, old business.
Oh yeah, there is an agenda.
Oh, there is none. Okay, okay.
Kudos to our public servants at the survey. We apologize. Hope we had time for dinner.
I, on behalf of all of us, for all of you, I apologize. I've been in the position you were just in and it's annoying to be outside not knowing what's going on and not knowing, having a clue how long it's going to take. I'm sorry, there's no, we have no option other than to do what we did and dot all the i's and t's and cross t's and whatever. And so we are now back in open session and prepared. After I first let you know, there is no old business to be discussed under number five, to move on to item number six and have commission deliberations related to the matter in front of us this evening. And for that purpose, the floor is open for motions.
Did you open the public hearing? Are you opening the public hearing?
We're opening the public hearing. I'm sorry. The public hearing on this matter is now open. Cindy, you want to try and summarize where we stand?
Sure. After several meetings with the planning commission, the applicant was approved for a special land use permit with various conditions attached. So what they've done is submitted a letter requesting that one of the conditions be adjusted or perhaps two of them be adjusted. Item number one, the capacity and item number two, the hours of operation or hours of occupancy. And perhaps the addition of sound deadening material. I'm not sure if that would have to go back to the planning commission or not, but not to the historic district commission or not, but I can check.
So as I'm given to understand it, the three courses of action open to the applicant and open to the commission are first to deny this special land use outright at this point. The second is to direct you to pursue the published route of for modification by way of Circuit Court. The third is to allow us to both discuss this, try and reformulate the areas that you just mentioned. Offer you the opportunity to respond to that as, and if that response is favorable, then we leave with that as the agreement. So it's kind of either, I mean, those are, if I'm properly capturing it and I'm sure the attorney will get me if I don't, those are the options available to you. We're prepared to take that third course this evening, which things found acceptable could end the process this evening. So I don't know if that puts in the applicant's court or if we should just begin to discuss.
Yeah, I think next is presentation by the applicant.
Okay.
I have a slightly different take on the three options. I just, just for the sake of the public, I really just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. And I don't know, Chris, if it's appropriate to weigh in, but I thought the three courses were, as you said, Dan, the appeal, you know, called a day and a lot for the appeal process. Amendment by mutual consent pursuant to section 154.85 of the city code or continue down with the public hearing that we've noticed for an expanded land use pursuant to 154.087 of the code. So I just, I just, for the sake of the public, I, those were the three as I understood it, but.
Fair enough. That, that jive with the attorney's perspective as we've discussed or not?
Yeah, I think both of you are consistent. I appreciate the sights to the actual city code provisions that effectuate those processes. And I think.
That's because she's a lawyer.
Sorry, no, other people will, other lawyers will hammer me later, so.
Even though section 15485 doesn't speak to a public hearing, of course, I think providing extra notice as well as offering the public hearing still allows that a way to proceed with respect to discussing 15485 in having a mutual acceptable amendment of a condition that was placed in the special land use.
Yeah, for the benefit of the public, 185, 154.085, item B, reads as follows. Any conditions imposed shall be recorded in the record of the special land use permit, which has been done. These conditions shall not be changed except upon the mutual consent of the planning commission and the landowner. And I think as a planning commission, I speak individually, that is an approach we can take this evening and get some immediate action for the applicant. The other two options are not something that would be acted upon tonight would be back on the applicant and legal representation to decide what to do. So do we want to put a motion on the table to that effect or?
Yeah, we try that and see and discuss it. Plenty of time for discussion.
Put a motion for opening discussion, mutually agree, mutually agreeable.
Yeah. So I would make a motion that the planning commission enter into a discussion with the landowner regarding the requested change in conditions and provide a mutually agreeable change.
I will second that.
This is a voice vote, right?
This is going to be a roll call. I'm going to go roll call.
Okay.
Broker?
Yes.
Crawford?
Are we still in this, we're not in discussion anymore?
This is to have a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not suggesting any numbers at this point. We're just.
We're opening discussions with.
We're opening discussion.
Okay, yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Harford?
Yes.
Manns?
Yes.
And as our attorney has advised us, there is no real protocol in the zoning ordinance to guide this discussion. So I would just personally suggest to the chair that perhaps we ask the applicant to speak to the request as has been presented and then have deliberation and then to make a.
If I could interject, I think the one thing that the legal counsel did give us the ability, right? It's kind of uncertain here is what we're dealing with is part of the ordinance of the nuisance and trying to determine. So if, when you're addressing it, if you're talking about your numbers or what you would like, that's really what we're trying to understand from those who own neighboring properties. And what you're trying to accomplish is looking at it from, can you put a limitation on it from trying to reduce the potential nuisance within the area?
Steve, you're the applicant?
One order. Chairman, legal counsel for the applicant.
Absolutely.
It was just a question if you'd allow me to start and then Christine can follow up with, with me, you know, anyway, Pat Druke, 55 Campbell Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I would say, first of all, my client would be more than happy to have any discussion with the planning commission. We obviously don't know what you all are thinking. So I can't say anything other than what we have been asking for. I will tell you from being at, at Wix, I know Wix, I know the area. I know Christine and I know this doesn't sound, it just sounds like a lawyer talking that none of you know. And this sounds sometimes like someone's going to win and someone's going to lose. And I know, I know Christine doesn't want that. She doesn't want any other business to lose. She also doesn't want to lose. So she wants to have something that is, that she's able to, to grow upon and, and be an asset to the community. And I think you heard that from a lot of the people that spoke, you know, especially the gentleman in the back that talked about, you know, getting through COVID. And I know it was hard on the ins as well. So it was hard on every single person in this entire room that runs any business. I ran a business and it was tough on me. So, so Christine's, when, when looking at the conditions that, that, that she believes are reasonable and necessary under the, under the statute are those, including her effort to try to get at what bothers people at nighttime when they're winding down. No one wants to try to go to bed and have a whole big racket outside the window, no matter where that is. But this downtown area, just like any other downtown area where I live, they are rebuilding the downtown to look like your downtown, to have residential mixed use with bars, open seating areas. And that's what Christine is trying to offer to the community. So when she, when she says, I'll close, I'll close that at 10:00 PM, you know, she's already losing business by doing that. So she is, she is, you know, sincerely trying to get to the point of trying to be a neighbor that, one, the compatibility issue in my mind is, is there. So there are very few, you're getting down to an assumption that this is just going to be noisy just because there are people there. So you have this shutting down at 10:00 PM with no occupancy and then no live, no live or audible music outside. Those things I think are very significant things that she is willing to go along with and agree to as, as part of, as part of those conditions. And so it really comes down to how can she operate with the numbers? And, and just it's, again, it really gets down to a financial perspective, not really, but that's a very big component of it. And, and we sincerely believe that with time limitation, the no music and, and I know it may not sound like anything, but the, the outdoor acoustical tiles that you can place on, on fences do have an impact on, on noise reduction. And so those things are, from her perspective, things that she can live with. And, you know, with respect to the occupancy, you know, I know that back when, when she first started, she's providing some examples of what these events might look like. She doesn't know, but she does look at very concrete things and not just, maybe this might happen. So when she, when she's looking at what the Michigan building code provides and then what the fire department has approved, knowing that on her sheet P4, she has those outside occupancies and the inside occupancies. The fire department is an approval of that. So we look at it from the perspective of our, of our, right? What evidence, what, what, what things can you actually rely upon? Those are things that I think you can safer rely upon in terms of what is reasonable and necessary. So I'm not in a position to sit up here and start throwing around numbers with you. We're happy to engage in that discussion to see whether something might be agreed upon. And, you know, we obviously would want to have a little time for her and I to confer about that before we're able to, you know, come back to you with an answer. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that I, that I might have or you might have of me, but I would invite Christine to offer any other comments she has.
Thank you.
Hi, Christine Murphy Pierce, 449 Water Street in Saga Talk. To your question or comment and stuff about what a nuisance is, I, I haven't looked up that definition in the dictionary and I don't know how you measure what a nuisance is. To me, a toddler screaming is a nuisance. Someone else might think that's cute. I just don't know what the definition of a nuisance is. I think my past behavior with never having fines, never getting anything, that I've never been a nuisance to this town. I think I try very hard to be a part of this town on every level, whether it's with the tourism, whether it's with the locals, whether it's with the schools. So the nuisance, I, I just don't know how you classify that or how we know how much noise is going to happen. I might have the quietest bridal shower on a Sunday afternoon. I could have the loudest bridal shower on a Sunday afternoon. I guess so, and they could all be standing up. They might not be sitting down. So I guess it's, it's like a revolving door of seats and this or that. When, I just always thought you go by building code and occupancy and that's how it goes. Cause that's how it was when I opened Wix. And I understand it's an out, that outdoor space is, is the issue. So, but I don't know what a nuisance is. I don't know how to classify that is. And I'm sure there is a way to do it and to measure it. I've had the Despole app on my phone many a times to make sure that my outdoor music isn't going above the correct decimal. I'm well aware of all of these things. I'm not just someone that's slinging drinks and in just enjoying a party. I'm bringing a service. I do a service. I know it looks like a lot of fun and everything, but this is what I do for a living and I do this as a service and I completely enjoy it and will continue to do it for as long as I can. So, and I appreciate everyone staying so late and going through all of this. But it is a commercial zone space. I do have a bar there already. I just want to bring something to the town that isn't available to have all your kids, all your grandkids' parties there. Everything that I constantly get calls for. And every time I have to say no to somebody, it pains me. And it doesn't pain me because I'm losing money. It pains me because I'm telling them the community doesn't have this to support it. We can't do this for you. So it's like, that pains me that we don't have something like that to offer. And it happens a lot. I'm just not pulling this out to be an excuse to get this. Like, like yesterday I had three calls about it, but you know, people walk in all about it. So it's a need and the intimate space to go in, have a drink with somebody where a band's not playing will be really nice. I don't like the bands. It bothers me sometimes working all night. So to be able to sit with a girlfriend in the cottage and have a glass of wine will be really nice. So it is a niche that is, is going to be helpful here in town. So the nuisance thing, I don't know how you measure it. I don't know how we're ever going to measure the amount of seats for, I guess that's why we have building codes and fire chiefs on some level. Cause I can't do all the jobs and either can you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it okay for me to comment?
Of course.
I just want to clarify the occupancy, there is a legal occupancy limit from a safety standpoint.
Yes.
That's different from what we're talking about. We're talking about a special land use for a specific space, which may not necessarily mean that we go up to the maximum allowed by the safety.
Okay.
And almost certainly doesn't, given the character of that business as it's been explained to us.
What character?
Small. You just mentioned intimate, cold place to go in, quiet.
Yep.
You know?
Yep, intimate, yep.
You know, so.
Exactly.
That's what we're trying to get.
Right.
As the attachment on this special land use. So it's never going to be wide open, whatever, you know, up to the, up to the max of the, of the safety authorization. That's not going to happen, period.
But I think there's a way we can come to.
Well, that's what we're trying to do now, but we haven't made any progress in the last 15 minutes, I can tell you.
Well, I stood outside for two hours, so I'm here to get through this.
Yeah, well, we were working during that time.
You know, I'm, I'm here to work through this. I don't want to be a nuisance. I want to, I want to come to a conclusion.
The, the conditions that are open for at least discussion are the occupancy limit? The hours? Say it again? And the inclusion of sound insulating. Oh, and the inclusion of sound insulating material.
Okay.
Which may or may not require the whole thing to go back to the historic. I'm not sure.
Okay.
FYI.
The one, since you're just gonna try to address you. When I was just raising the point of the news, I wasn't saying that you were a nuisance.
No, I know, it's in the ordinance.
It's, we're, when we had the legal, we were discussing because it is kind of unprecedented. You know, treat, no one, we don't know what the number would be as far as what would be a nuisance. I agree with you very much that 10 people could create more noise that could become a nuisance versus 50. You know, so it's, so I just wanted you to kind of understand that, one, we do thank you. And thank everybody who has been here because we are trying to see that the town has the services to offer and that we can be growing and so on. From my standpoint, at least as part of the commission, I want to just be able to say thank you for that. But I think then on the other side is trying to understand, you know, like what is the number? That, you know, that's what we're probably all struggling with. You know, is trying to determine, you know, what is appropriate to make it intimate and something that would be financially feasible for yourself. And we could either, you know, suggest numbers as a committee or you can try and help us and understand, you know, what would be, you know, agreeable or workable with you.
Right. If I just may just ask a question, Chairman. If I, if I misinterpreted what you started off with, with, are you expecting us now to say, this is the occupant load inside and outside that we would be agreeable to? Or that's, that's what I'm not.
Might be a worthwhile part of the discussion, absolutely. I don't want to hear anymore about how tough COVID was, cause we all know about that.
Right, that, that, that's where I'm, and maybe I think that's where Christine is a little not confused, but maybe just confused, the only word I can think of right now. We obviously are at different numbers. You said 25 total. And in our last submission, Christine had whatever she had.
Ninety-eight.
Yeah. So, um, you know.
Yeah, so.
I guess I don't know how you want this to unfold here.
Yeah, that's, exactly. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yep, our zoning code is written in such a way that it opens up an opportunity, which we're doing right now to discuss what might be mutually beneficial to help us meet the goals of the zoning code, which we think we did with our first, at least I believe I did as an individual commissioner, with that first special land use permit, which was granted with conditions. And after consideration and discussion from information given to us by the applicant, we have agreed as a commission to reopen that discussion, as the chair just said. So there are, and our attorney can correct my statement, there are no real rules here about whether we need to resolve this this evening. We, we could simply choose to not take any action at all and maybe make a motion to meet individually or hold another special meeting, discussing specifically the conditions and changes to those. And if you need to go back and, and, and discuss that, or we can make a motion for a number and then put it up for a vote and then see where that goes. And that, that's kind of where I am on this. And again, I just want to thank everybody for being here. This is an extremely difficult decision. And our balance is trying to balance the business, residents, and frankly, the wellbeing of the community on a whole basis.
If I, if I may, just quickly, I, I would, I think it would be most productive if I were able to talk to Christine to, you know, about that. And if the commission is open to having, you know, tabling, tabling this for a very short amount of time for us to have that discussion. Um, or at least if you can give me an opportunity to talk to her for two minutes.
Right.
And then I can come back. So that way I'm not thinking out loud here, which is not doing.
I could.
Sure.
Legal counsel is also telling us that there is the potential that you could have something approved. You could start to operate the business and then you could actually say, hey, you're capable of more. And you can then come back and ask for an expansion. So that's, so it's not closing the door. It's just getting something that, if I understood correctly, Chris, was that correct? That as a business owner, if they were operating, they would be able to come back and ask for an expansion on that condition?
So, under the code, under 154087, you're allowed to come back and ask for an expansion of a use? And you could certainly take the approval that you have now and come back at that time when you have, when you would have an application and facts demonstrating sort of the need for that use. Um, the one thing, the one difference under 87, as I understand it, this actual hearing this evening is being held as a public hearing, consistent with notice that was provided to the adjacent landowners. That same process would have to be followed, uh, for proceeding under 87. So for purposes of also the public's edification, if that process were to be pursued by the applicant, they would again receive 300 foot notice that there's been an application filed and there'd have to be publication of the paper in a public hearing held.
If I just may just talk to Christine somewhere for just a few moments, that way.
Yeah.
I'm not worried.
I flew since then, I actually.
Would, would you have a record of that, Cindy, that you mailed it?
Yes.
So.
For this evening? No, I, no, I received nothing. I received nothing from Mr. Phelan. Had no knowledge of it until I told him.
Well, it will be in our, um, hard paper file.
Yeah, I can confirm that I didn't, I didn't receive anything. And I had called and asked to have my, my address over on the east side of the state put forth instead of the Sagatuck post office, so.
Can I ask a quick question? Have you received them in the past on a regular basis when noticed? Okay.
Not because we're going to the post office box and I had called the city and asked them to change my mailing address. Cindy has emailed me in the past, but I didn't get anything this time. I sent an email. I hope, I'm not sure if you all received that or not.
Yes, we did. We did.
Yes.
But there was no, there was no public mailing. I, we didn't call Chris Flatt, I know he was in the first loop. And so was the whip boy. I could call Julie. But she called me today and she said nothing about it. She didn't even know about it. And I, I told her, that's where I was going.
I wonder if it would make sense to pull your documentation, Cindy? Because then that seems like the way to figure out if there's an incorrect address issue.
There's not an incorrect address with me. I got the first mailing and so did, um, and I received no public.
Well, just trying to help out, so.
Pretty sure we did that Kate was the one that folded and stuffed and labeled all the envelopes. Do you remember that, when she did that, all that folding and stuffing?
I think I was in Florida.
Oh, you were in Florida.
Is there a record of that holding on this one?
Yes, there, when there is clipping is in the folder. Do you want me to get them?
Yeah, that was what I was suggesting, that, that to resolve, try to resolve things that we could, it's public documents so that we could look at those.
We, we do have those records and they're in a folder.
Yeah, it's public.
Go ahead. Grab that folder from downstairs. Grab both of them. The third 21st. 421, 421 and the three, one, the one that got beaten tabled.
Since, since we're kind of having a discussion, I guess, when I first bought my property and I spoke with the city, I come to talk with Cindy, I think, and a couple other people. And, and I was specifically told that, that my property, I had to maintain both residential and commercial. And it was no, there was no getting around that. And so I've assumed my whole time through that that is the minimum requirement for all the properties, um, on that block. And then I'm not sure where the zoning begins and ends, but all of my neighbors have always had that. And I'm just curious now, does this ruling, the one that happened, you know, last time, does that change at all? Does that mean that I don't have to operate my house anymore and I can turn into any kind of business that I want? Is that, I mean, that's, I'm just confused by this whole process, quite honestly. And I want nothing about, nothing but the best for Christine, but this doesn't seem to be the system.
Is that not the special land use process?
Maybe that's what it is.
He could have any of the permitted uses that are permitted by right in that zone district and any of the special land uses subject to review and approval by the planning commission.
Did you hear that reply?
I did, thank you.
Thank, thank you for the question. Notice. Yeah, we're, pardon me, the, the city clerk is checking out some records for public notice for the public hearing this evening. We have some residents that are within 300 feet of the property that have attested that they have not received notification of this public hearing. So that's what we're doing.
Posting. And this is the notice of the public hearing. If you can pass it, I'd need it back, cause it's the only one in the folder.
The only thing that this wouldn't tell us is that it went to these individuals, correct?
Yes.
I'll bring this over, thanks.
Thank you.
Sometimes mail is funny in Sagatuck. It's because of the P.O. box versus your physical address. I don't get a lot of stuff at Wix from government, things like that. Cause if it has 449 Water Street and it doesn't have the P.O. box, it gets sent back. That's all the time.
What's up, we're just, though the notice went out.
Yeah, and may I suggest that perhaps in the future, we keep a list of addresses that it went to? That seems, you know.
That's why I asked.
Or some type of, but we can deal with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would agree, this needs to be better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, thank you Chair, Chairman. Uh, I've had a chance, and planning commission members, I've had a chance to speak with my client. And, um, what we are proposing is in terms of the conditions, our occupancy is limited to 50 seats total outside and 25 seats inside, posted inside the building. Hours of occupancy limited to 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM outside. And, um, a revised can, I'm sorry, um, a, installing an exterior noise reducing acoustic barrier and/or panel on the fence at the east and south sides, immediately adjacent to the outdoor event space. And then the R, the conditions, uh, as they are written, three through 10, from the March 17, 2022 minutes that were approved this evening, which begin at music, live or recorded, is limited to indoor only at levels and then goes down to any changes to the site plan or conditions shall be brought back to the planning commission for review. And we would be willing to, um, agree to that in writing.
I would say that there's a, we may be in the range of being able to work something out on hours. I'm sorry, on occupancy levels. I, I think the commission in general would be willing to offer 25 and 25 hours as you laid them out. And acoustic, uh, acoustic modification or whatever you want to call it, as you've described it. And that the exterior for the outdoor area that those, I could, I could see the outdoor area, which I think is something you mentioned before, Christine, would be to contracted parties.
That's in the conditions.
Those are all conditions, three, three through 10, as they were already set forth.
So that's where we are, I think. And let's feel free, there are seven of us, it's not just me.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Fox. I, I, I'm, um, going back to the earlier discussions that we've had with the applicant and the numbers that were attested were the 25 inside, 25 outside. Um, I am open to discussion regarding changing the condition, number one, to 25 inside and 25 outside, as you suggested, with the hours of occupancy limited to 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Um, and then the sound changes as well. I would, I would support that for maintaining the, um, neighborhood that we're trying to achieve here. Um, I also want to note for the record that item number seven, drainage is to be approved by the city engineer. And if after construction it does not drain properly, the concrete will be removed and replaced. I know that flat work has already been done and there have been several, um, citizens as well as planning commissioners that have, um, noted that the cement was poured, it will be draining on adjoining properties. So just FYI, that's gonna have to be that. In theory violates the special land use permit conditions that were approved, so.
Unless it's, if that's the case, unless it's removed.
Right.
Or corrected.
Yeah, or corrected. So just, that's more of an FYI. I, just saying that has been brought to my attention. So, um, I'd be happy to make a motion that we change our conditions as follows. Item number one, occupancy is limited to 25 seats inside and 25 seats outside and posted inside the building. Two, hours of occupancy limited to 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Inside and outside.
Correct. Thank you. And then the sound, which would, we, we probably would be added into, would that be an additional condition? Or would we write that into one of the current conditions?
I don't know, we needed agreed to somehow.
Before we move to a motion, are we all set on the 25?
I think then we have discussion regarding.
And we discuss, yes, absolutely.
Would you like us to sit down now then?
No, no.
Could you have the, the, the noise barrier in there?
That, that's what I'm asking is how to include that in the conditions. It would be an additional condition then, so condition 11.
Make sure it stays in place too.
And I think that condition would be conditioned on historic.
Yes.
Approval if needed.
Yeah.
I think that was mentioned.
That's my motion.
Open for discussion, committee discussion, commission discussion. Oh, we don't have a second yet.
I need a second. I'll second it.
Commission discussions.
The only thing I would add to that motion is, again, I go back to the applicant's comments that were made repeatedly at the beginning of this process. Her, her vision is to make this an intimate, speak easy space. And the numbers that were used, 25 inside and 25 outside were directly quoted and noted in the record of the meetings. And so I, again, I go back to that number that the applicant has given us as being appropriate condition.
Can you please say your motion over again? I'm a little confused on what the motion was.
Okay, I will make a motion that the planning commission amend its conditions for approval for the special land use as follows. One, occupancy is limited to 25 seats inside and 25 seats outside and posted inside the building. Two, hours of occupancy will be limited to 11 a.m. to 10 p.m. Inside and outside. Thank you. And we will add item 11, I believe is how we would do this, is to add the sound. Proposal.
Sound deadening.
Yeah, some, sound deadening proposal. We could probably use the language that was given to us by the app. That's my motion.
Thank you.
All other conditions remain unchanged.
You resecond it?
And I second, I will resecond it.
Thank you.
Okay, back in discussion. Fire away.
The distinction between seats versus occupancy. You know, I mean, seats is physical, is seats, physical appliances. You know, versus you'd have a number of seats. Now that would hold true, very true for, say, luncheons, which would be great. Except, say, if you've got receptions and you've got all sorts of people, you know, how do we account for standing people?
Good question. I think the vision that I have is that it would be, in keeping with what we're trying to achieve here, is that a maximum of 25 outside and inside, not including any service staff and not including people that would just be 50 people coming to stand around the 25 that are seated. And how we would.
Patrons.
Patrons. And I believe that the conditions also did include that this would be part of the contracts that would be provided to the people that are using the event space as to what the hours of occupancy, the number of seats.
And that's their thinking behind that was that there was concern that if that wasn't delineated as a, as a rented space that occupancy could, you know, you could just, people could keep coming in the front and going to the back. I mean, you, you have no way, you know, you have no way really of control, just drinking from the bar and going outside into a totally non rented space just happens to be outdoor. So that's why that was set that way.
Thank you, Chairman Fox.
Further discussion?
Two things that I would like to discuss would be, I don't see why the inside would have to be limited to 10 p.m. The inside of the Wix bar is not limited to 10 p.m. So if the people are inside the space, I'm not certain why we would want to have 10 p.m. restriction. I think, so I can understand the outside space. And again, I wasn't part of, unfortunately, it was not part of the original presentation, but due to the death of another family, but I still think that outside, from looking at the space, it could accommodate without causing any adverse effect larger than 25. And so I don't, you know, and I know that they're asking for 50. You know, again, no one knows what that number is. I just personally think 25 on the outside is too low. So if it stays 25, I will have to make my decision if we vote on that. What is your feeling?
May I ask, this is a question, and I'm sorry you're asking her, but I'm a little confused because we started down this road of discussing, trying to come to a mutual agreement. Now you're, I don't know if this is a motion to, to come to a counter offer to what we proposed. Because if this is deliberation on, you're just rejecting our offer. We've never had a public hearing on the other because my comments were made in the, in the vein of trying to come to some sort of negotiated mutual. In, so I gave you something. And so I don't know if there's, if now that discussion's over with and now you're deliberating on something. If we are trying to come to some mutual agreement, I'd like to have some discussion on, on these points, but I don't want to get in. So that's why it's really a question slash statement. So if I can get some direction from the chair or.
It is an effort in keeping with the ordinance to try and come to an agreement. However, that happens, a number is put out and somebody says that'll work. Or there's a response with a different number, whatever. I don't know. I don't care, honestly. I just want to go home.
We all want, we all want to go home.
So we're trying to get to a number.
All right.
And we've offered, you've offered against the original, original condition, you've tripled that. And we responded with effectively doubling the original condition. Now you tell me which of those two seems more reasonable.
Well, Chairman, I respectfully disagree with the comments because the February 17 meeting was a tabled site application. So that was tabled for a revised site application. On March 22, the applicant submitted for that meeting, a revised site application. And that site plan had the numbers we're asking for right now. I listened to the video from February 17 and at minute 15 and 50 seconds, she does talk about an example of 25, approximately 25 people inside and approximately 25 people outside. It doesn't matter what comment she made at the February 17 meeting because that site plan was tabled to make changes to the site plan. The pictures of the chairs on the site plan, if you count them up, does not matter. It, the, the site plan requirements for the city does not require the applicant to identify in, in, in a diagram, how many seats they have. She requested on, on sheet P four. That's why I made clear in my letter to you all on April 14, what that request was. So she's never tripled her request. I understand and respect that the, that, that the planning commission set a total of 25 seats total. So respectfully, we've gone from a request, which we believe is reasonable of 68 outside seats and 36 inside seats. And so we've come down from to 50 and 25 respectfully. And with respect to hours in our outside terminating at 10 p.m. And it, and so I made it specific to outside. That is also changed. So we've also changed that request also. We've, so we've, we've come down there as well. We've also agreed to install again, in an effort to reduce noise, the acoustic barrier. So, and agreeing to the conditions three through 10. So respectfully, she has not tripled her number. She has come, we have come down from that number. And if the, so that's where I'm, I'm wondering if the, if the commission's collective counter to us is 25 and 25. I guess I'd like to know if that is a line in the sand or not.
I know you guys get paid by the word.
Well, we need to.
The attorney's hand is up. Am I correct or not?
Yeah, what, what I would recommend for proceeding is I think that if the applicant wants to take issue and, and has grievances with respect to the prior record in your decision, I think that's more appropriately brought as an appeal. I don't think that's brought in the spirit of eight, of section 85. With respect to the process that you were engaging in, if you, what I would recommend is if the commission's going to deliberate towards what would be an acceptable standard, if that's not acceptable to the applicant, then that would also, I think, dictate that the commission would want to then deny the requested amendment. And that would sort of be, I think, for me, that makes the most sense under the spirit of the ordinance as to how the commission might want to consider proceeding.
Understood. Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor and seconded. It's been read at least three times. We should all be able to recite it from memory.
So, so I, what I would, thank you, Chris, for commenting on this. So where I stand on this is if the applicant from a, again, we don't have a protocol and a process that's built into our zoning ordinance. So the mutual consent, if the applicant says 25 and 25, which is the motion, is not acceptable, then that should be the answer. It's not acceptable. And then I would withdraw my motion and then I would, then we.
You can make, we can vote that motion as the commission's position. Take the response and then act accordingly. So there being no further discussion from the commission.
I guess I'm not quite. No, a little confused. If we pass the motion first, or do we ask the applicant whether that's acceptable? If it's not accept, if, if that's not acceptable to them, then why would we adopt the motion?
Well, that's why I said I would then withdraw my motion.
I guess we have to ask.
We would ask in a number of 50 and 25.
Well, I think we have, we have to ask if that, if that's, we have to agree that that's our proposal.
I apologize again for being virtual. I would pass the motion because that is the collective position of the commission. You then, because if, that way you've sort of reached a conclusive thought as to what you're going to agree to. If it's not acceptable to them, then there's not mutual consent and the amendment should just be denied as goes away.
But by passing the motion, are we, we're not changing, we're not giving approval to that on their application or? I mean, they haven't asked.
You're, you're indicating that you would amend the condition consistent with the provisions that you're willing to reach. If that's what you pass and then the applicant indicates that that's unacceptable, then there is not mutual consent to amend the condition.
Okay. Chris, would we have to debate or at least discuss whether we would be in agreement with their number of 50 and 25? Or just move to our proposal or motion?
Well, you, I mean, that was sort of the response. You have a motion of support on the table at this point. I think that sounds to me like that would be something that you would discuss now if you want to change that motion support. Otherwise, you vote on it. The majority of the commission will decide the position.
Wait. I was just obvious. I didn't hear any conversation here at all about their 50 and 25.
Oh.
Is that off the table? Is it, is that something that anybody could agree to?
If the motion is not tabled.
Or amended.
He said.
We have, we have to vote on.
He said we could amend it and I've just asked.
We can.
Yeah.
If, if it's withdrawn and amended.
Shouldn't we be discussing our motion? And that would lead.
Yeah, indeed we are. That's what we're supposed to be doing right now.
He just said that we could amend our motion before.
Correct, correct.
We can.
Yeah.
If you wanted to propose an amendment to the motion, I guess you could make that motion for the amendment.
I propose an amendment to the motion to open discussion for the 50 and 25, 50 outside and 25 inside as requested by the applicant. There's a second.
Second. Hearing none? That has to be withdrawn.
I would respectfully ask that the chair call a question.
We'll call the question on the original motion. And if anybody has a question about those numbers, I'll raise your hand.
I do have a question about the motion. Sorry. And proceed, it's more procedural question about that's just for our discussion, not for public comment. Is that correct? We've already had the public comments. We would, we're just discussing it.
Yeah, that's, this is, the motion is the commission's motion.
Okay.
And that represents our attempt at a mutually agreeable solution. If the applicant does not find that agreeable, then we're done. And the, and the option outlined in the zoning enabling act, they follow.
Makes sense.
Yes. We're, we're still in discussion. We haven't.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Haven't voted yet.
No, I don't.
Go ahead.
No.
She's asking you to call a question.
Are me?
She's asking you to call the question.
Oh, you're asking me to call. Well, I did. Recall for the question. Recall the question. Vote on the motion. Roll call or voice?
Roll call. Broker?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Vaughn? Yes. Harford?
Yes.
Fans?
No.
So now in the spirit of attempting to determine whether we have a mutually agreed upon solution to this. And call on the applicant.
Let me ask a question for, I have two questions. Now, this, this is only if the applicant respectfully declines your offer or whatever you want to call it, the minutes of March 17, 2022 that were approved with those conditions are still valid and in effect. Correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. And my second question is if I may just, I did it very quickly before, if I may talk to my client and I'll be right back with you.
Maybe out there looking for a new job, you know, this available at any moment.
Well, a million years ago, Cynthia McKean used to use a whistle.
Oh, yeah. I prefer a starting whistle.
Oh, no, it wasn't a whistle. I'm sorry. It was a bell.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, right, right. I forgot about that.
I, I couldn't hear before is with the, with respect to the number of occupants and number of seats, what, what, what did you say? Is there a distinction or no distinction? Is it 50 total? Or 50 seats?
My spirit in the motion was that there would be 25 seats inside and 25 seats outside, and that's maximum occupancy.
Thank you.
And then that's, that's not, just to be clear, we were thinking not combined 50 outside or 50 inside.
But is, gentleman's asking, I mean, is, is the seats synonymous with occupancy? I mean.
Yeah. Patrons was.
So patrons equals seats equals occupancy.
For us here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought.
No, I said someone else's talk. I thought there.
Well, he was.
All right. But thank you, planning commission members for your efforts tonight, but we respectfully decline to enter into a mutual agreement along those lines.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes item number six on the agenda. Item number seven is communications, all of which related to the matter before the commission. Yes, and, and we have.
Are you closing the?
Did you?
Oh, yes, I am. So we'll close the public hearing at.
Nine fifty-eight.
Nine fifty-eight. No communications, no reports of officers and committees. This is the second opportunity for public comment. If you choose to, choose to make it. Right ahead. You have three minutes.
I know it's late. You are all faced with a very, very.
Can you just please reenter?
Eric Chayton, 6354 Riverside Road. Business in downtown. Again, I, I don't envy the position you're all in and, and grateful. It's not me. What's the difference between a 356 seat thing being built across the street with music so loud you'll be able to hear it by Kilwitz? I mean, I don't, I don't get the difference. And maybe there's a huge difference. But that, that's the largest seating outdoor capacity in this city by 100 plus, I believe, in the same zoned area. I'm, I'm just confused and I'm scared. As I plan one day to come in front of you, fine folks, and it seems, and I could be completely wrong because I haven't read that, you know, I'm, I'm a cook, right? It seems like that thing that I'm looking at there is much more destructive. And I used to work for those folks, good people. I'm not. I don't, I don't see, this seems like a much larger noise, drinking, people, taxing the police, et cetera, than the cottage. I don't get it. I know it's not time to maybe explain it to me, but it, it leaves me very confused and alarmed.
Appreciate the comment.
Thank you.
We, just FYI, we don't engage in discussion or.
So how does one get clarity as to 356 seats across the street, 25 down there?
If I were to suggest one thing, read the ordinance.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are we done?
We're just about done and I'm going to entertain a motion for adjournment, Richard. And if you'd like to make that, I'd appreciate.
Adjourn, please.
Second? Second by?
Second.
Maybe we should wait a minute before we go out.
By broker?
And by broker, yes.
This voice, voiceful. Those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, nay. Eyes have it. We are finally adjourned.
Good evening.
Thank you, Chris, for being here this evening. And thanks to everybody that's online for being on the, on our meeting. Appreciate your participation.